Good morning. It's Wednesday, June 11th. We're here for our regular scheduled county commissioner meeting. We have a full slate of commissioners here, our administrator and our clerk of the board. And at this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask everybody to please rise and join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the adoption of the current agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see us pull item number seven from the consent. Other than that, approval of the consent agenda, or I'm sorry, the agenda with removing item seven of consent.
Second?
There's been a motion as second discussion. This was pulled last meeting for just a consensus. What is the issue today, Mr. Danzel?
Mr. Chairman, this was a hanger-on. I should have caught this. This is where the board will need to come to a decision on what we're going to do with our ADO funds. So I just, it was a hanger-on. It was my fault. And so I appreciate you removing that. And we can deal with that later.
Deal with it next week. Okay. Been a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Takes us back to public comment. Anybody for public comment?
Good morning, commissioners. I read your information you gave me last week on the ADO with great interest. I also shared it when I went out to Colodus days with people who are very active out there and they would like a copy. I'll get you the email. And also with Bob Gartner and his quarterly meeting up in Spokane, this ties very much into what he's trying to do with energy. It looks like there's a strong potential to get far more energy from the dams. I still believe that the energy proposal should include gas just as an option in case things shift once again. And we know how this atmosphere shifts all the time in the political range. So I look forward to reviewing that and seeing that come into fruition on solid ground and appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? So with our new hirer, I'd like to welcome, we will be returning to phones next week, possibly? Two weeks. Two weeks, we'll have the ability to call in for public comment on the phone. With that, we'll move down to approval of the eight items on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of items one through nine with the exception of seven on the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Been a motion as second for the eight items that we're going to approve, removing item seven. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Takes us down to regular business. Item A is Resolution 2025-0181, status change for employment agreement with Mr. Jansky.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, this is a status change. When we started the Franklin County Department of Corrections, Mr. Jansky went from being a bargaining unit to now in a non-bargaining position. For that reason, we wanted to enter into an employment agreement with the captain. And so that's what you have before you as the captain's employment agreement for being the captain of the Franklin County Department of Corrections.
Any other discussion from commissioners?
No, sir.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of Resolution 2025-0181 as presented.
Second?
Been a motion as second for Resolution 2025-0181. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Takes us down to request for consensus acquiring a metal detector camera utilizing grant funds. And this is for Ms. Roscoe. Welcome.
Thank you. We have a security grant we use currently. It's split up into two amounts. One is for bailiff services. The other is for other needs that we have around the courthouse for security purposes. But we're getting towards the end of this grant funding cycle. And we do have a lot of funds available to us, but there is a requirement of a 40% county match going kind of out of my courtroom in the area and just looking at what do we need for the campus in order to be secure? I was told that there is a need for a metal detector. Obviously, that's not within my wheelhouse as far as the guard shack is concerned. So we wanted to get some sort of consensus or approval to make that purchase prior to the end of the month so that we can report that on the grant cycle.
Questions, commissioners?
So where is the metal detector going to go?
In the guard shack. So currently, there was two. From what I understand, one is not operational at all. The second is getting towards the end of its life and they don't have any parts to go in and repair it. So we're going to be in a situation where that's no longer going to work as soon as it dies. They don't have another one to step in. So they figured it would be a good idea to have one on board to get in, installed and ready to go.
All right.
And then I have the camera on here also. I didn't realize that. But there's a situation upstairs. I'm not going to say where that we need an extra camera. It's not very clear. You can't see much of anything. There was a situation where somebody made a request for that camera footage because there was an alleged assault upstairs. And it doesn't appear that they were able to get that footage. So we need to install a camera in that area.
Commissioner Bowman?
Do we know how much we're asking for? I recognize it's 60-40 split, but do we know?
I understand that the metal detector is around $2,500.
Say that again?
$2,500.
And the camera, roughly?
Probably about, I don't know, five to 1,000. Depending on the, there's also that service that we need to provide for to have it installed into the system and probably drill a hole.
500 to 1,000, not 5,000.
500 to 1,000.
To 1,000, yes.
So cumulatively less than 5,000 of which the county would be responsible for 40% of that?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
There's no further comments or questions. I'll entertain a motion. Or I guess there's just for a consensus?
Consensus for me.
Ms. Mullen?
Yep.
Okay. We'll get on that. Thank you.
Next, we're down to correspondence. Mr. Danzel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Earlier in the week, we received two pieces of correspondence as it pertains to being able to fill positions under the hiring freeze. I would recommend to the board that we approve both of these requests. The first request is from the auditor's office to fill two positions. We have two outstanding folks that are going to be leaving the county and their core positions. One is responsible for payroll. The other is responsible for accounting, invoicing, accounts receivable, accounts payable. I have reviewed all the positions within that office and the budget. It's within budget. It's a core position and I recommend that you fill those positions.
Okay, questions? Do we need a motion for this? Okay. That, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to hire two essential vacant positions in the auditor's office.
Second?
Been a motion as second for the hiring of two essential vacated positions in the auditor's office. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Takes us down to another request.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, this comes out of the planning department and same kind of situation. Core position doesn't extend or doesn't increase the number of FTEs. And it's a position that Mr. McCart has asked for to be able to perform the duties within his department. Also, we've asked a lot of Mr. McCart recently, not only with going through the comprehensive plan, but in addition to that, we're asking him to take a look at the code and perform what he can there. This will help with that. They just really don't have the bandwidth without this position to be able to get some of the more menial tasks done as well. So I also recommend that the board approves this position.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of our planner's request to hire a technician in building and planning.
Second?
Been a motion as second for the request to hire a technician in planning and building. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Takes us down to a commissioner administrator updates. Mr. Danzel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. One of the things that I wanted to mention off the bat was with these requests that you're getting, one thing that I think that we should amend, if you're open to it, is I think that we should amend right now, especially the hiring freeze as it pertains to public works. And the reason I think that we should do that is because public works is right now in their project season. And so the idea that they would have to be pushed back a week and maybe take the project longer to be done, or pause or like delay for reasons that really don't make sense, seems like a bad idea. The other part is this doesn't touch our current expense fund. So this is a standalone budget. They're project-based and project-funded. To me, it makes all the sense in the world to kind of let out a little bit on the hiring freeze. It wouldn't apply to the entire current expense fund. But with public works, just the idea of otherwise, you know, be like a half a dozen requests maybe every other week. And I think just for staying on top of projects, if you're willing and you want to think about that, maybe get back to me later. But I think it'd be a good idea to kind of let out public works at this point so they can get those projects completed. Another kind of a question that I would ask for some guidance on, and I need to let McKinstry know, and you've seen the emails going back and forth and the correspondence, that they need to be informed on what we want to do with the solar and battery grant. As you recall, it looks like that our potential tax incentive may be going away and that we probably aren't going to be able to reach that goal. And so that was something that we need to make a decision on as a board and let them know if we want to pursue that. In my way of looking at it, the project becomes unaffordable if we're not able to enjoy that tax credit from the federal government. So probably before next meeting, we'll need an answer on that so that otherwise, we just won't have the time, even if we wanted to move forward with it, to be able to get it. So I just wanted to put that on your radar. You will have two letters in your packet this week. One is to the White House. One is to the Department of Homeland Security regarding the resolution that was passed last week. I'm also excited to announce, and I will be getting in touch with the folks in Basin City, Connel, Mesa and Colodus. But I got confirmation last night that the USDA Rural Development State Director Kirk Pearson will be here on the 25th at our regular meeting. And then wanted to ask you gentlemen, if you had any projects in mind. I know Colodus Sewer was one that we talked about. I know that in Mesa, we talked about the grocery store building. I know in all these communities, you all have certain things that are really important to you. And I was just wondering, he's made himself available the entire day, him and his number two guy. And so he's ready to go take a look at projects and get out there with you and really try to see if there's any way that USDA Rural Development can help in some of these outlying communities.
I think that Basin City has a need for water. They need a new water system.
So I think what we ought to do is we get Mr. Pearson in your old Ford pickup, the flatbed, and we take him out there.
Can we all fit in that one?
I'll sit in the back. Thank you. No, I think it's a good thing. And I'm really interested. And this will mean something to the folks that were part of the historical society. Folks in Connel and these outlying areas are struggling and they're really looking for funds to be able to finish some projects that are pretty important to them and to the county. I think this might be the way of going about doing it. So I'm excited about that.
Excellent.
I was able to meet with our budget team for the first time, minus Wes McCart, because Wes was at another meeting that was highly important that we both kind of just scheduled and couldn't get out of. But we talked about revising some of the budget policies and came up with a plan that we'll meet every couple of weeks until the preliminary budget season on, starting in August. And I want to thank the auditor and the treasurer for breaking loose with some of their staff. I had Russ and Stuart and Tim and Ryan and Jeff, and they've really stepped up and have been great to work with. And thank you to the auditor and treasurer for that. Met with the commissioners to discuss the agenda. And then also, I briefed you all on the upcoming visit for Mr. Pearson. We talked about the ADO. I wanted to pass along that we have received, and I'm sure that this will be no surprise to you, some concerns, comments about the temperatures in the building because of how hot it's been. And there were a couple of, I know that there were a couple of maintenance issues and there were things that were going on. But the other part of it is, we had kind of paused on all capital expenditures while we were kind of going through the budget, the budget shortfalls list. And so Jennifer Wagner sitting in the audience today, and she could speak to it if she needed to later, I suppose. But there really is a question of whether we should spend money fixing the HVAC unit in this building, or if we should try to Band-Aid it together. It's quite a bit of money. But in the best interest for the long-term viability of the county here, it might be worthwhile to take a look at that. So I will, I'll get with you individually after the meeting and kind of discuss that further. But there are certain areas that I think make sense to really be tight-fisted with the money right now. I don't know that making everybody sweat it out in the building would be the best idea. Let me go down. Mr. Mullen, Commissioner Mullen, we've got an affidavit for you to sign. It's just some of the things here. I met with the coroner. He's going to want on the agenda here to talk about finishing off his project. So just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And then finally, and I was talking to Commissioner Bowman about this, and I need to get with Bo, this is very early on, but about our PA system and the potential of being able to make announcements, of being able to utilize it in a safety event. But I will dig into that further and see what our capabilities are and where our shortcomings are and report back to the board next week. And with that, Mr. Chairman and commissioners, that was my weekly board report. And just let me know if there's anything that you want me to be tackling.
Thank you. Commissioner Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, had the Columbia Valley Center for Recovery site walk update. They have been making a lot of progress. A lot of people there. It's buzzing from one end to the other. Something that I asked them that, I know that it's been made very, very clear to me that we are not a decision-making body, but I'm watching that, the process and the project and its forward progress. And it appears that there's a considerable amount of scope creep. And so I asked about that, asked for some information on that. And the bill continues to rise there. And I know that's a very needed process and project. And but I think we need to be aware of it before we get too far down the road. And anyways, I asked for an update. And when I get that, I can share that with you. Had our Hapo tour with McKinstry last week. And there's some work that we need to do in advance of them coming. There's a couple of different areas that we potentially could do some pre-work that would save us time and money on the process. One of those is to bring in the needed electrical service, which is a very large service. There's not currently enough power there to provide HVAC services to the arena side. And also in the arena, need to do some cleanup and preparation work in advance of the new HVAC system coming in. Had a luncheon, was invited to Habitat for Humanity. And Habitat for Humanity locally here has, they give a bunch of the statistics of the housing that they've provided. There's a misnomer with Habitat for Humanity that they're providing free or very inexpensive housing. And I don't know that I'm quite describing it right. But they are a market rate. But the process that they go, families have the opportunity to put sweat equity into homes that they do. And they've been working with our legislators and Department of Natural Resources. And they have a site secured in Pasco on Department of Natural Resources land, where that they will have a long-term lease with them and put up approximately 200 houses. And so appreciated learning about that. Had a strategic advisory team meeting with BCES last week, had been Franklin Transit Executive Board meeting. Then I was invited to and enjoyed attending our Franklin County Corrections swearing-in of their staff. So thank you, Chief Harmon. Enjoyed being invited to that. Met with our prosecutor and attorney's office and have planned to do that in regular. So thank you, Mr. Briggs, for that and look forward to doing that regularly. Agenda meeting with Brian, as well as significant number of other meetings. And appreciate working with you. And wanted to just point out that hopefully the public is starting to see this. You and our clerk and the diligent efforts that you put in, I think is preparing the commissioners much more than we have in the past. I think we've seen that today as we went through, you know, 11 items rapidly. You're preparing us in advance. And I think that that's very, very helpful. So thank you for that. Got, I've had a number of these calls over time. And this last week, I had one that was very, very, very pointed and frankly, was not easy to get. There was no answer that I was providing that was acceptable to a farmer that's out northeast of town here, that the stink that comes off of the Pasco Process Water Use Facility. And so this individual asked me if there was a way that we could declare this stink a nuisance. And so I don't know. So I talked to our PA's office about that. I talked to our administrator about that. I was in the audience approximately 10 years ago at Pasco City Council when a group of probably 20 to 30 of the people that live in that area, the farmers, when they brought a mason jar and walked around and let each of the council members smell. And they also shared pictures of what their back porches were like on an evening when, you know, there wasn't an inch between the flies that are in their back porch that are brought. So I promised this farmer that I would go ask some questions of the city and would try to learn and understand where we're at. It's been my understanding with the updates to the facility that that smell should dissipate and go away. But he assured me that that has not been the case. And so I will look into that. On the solar project that you mentioned, I believe our legal counsel is going to do a review on that. So we look forward to that next week. And then just the thought occurred to me, would there be value in doing a pre-meeting with Colodus, Connel, Mesa, et cetera, next week in preparing, you know, wrestling ideas about what is prepared and presenting, Mr. Pearson, you know, the needs that we have in our communities? Would there be value in preparing for that so that when he comes, we have somewhat of a united voice in what our requests potentially would be? So with that, Mr. Chairman, that's my report.
Commissioner Mullen?
All right. So last week, had the Greater Columbia Behavioral Health meeting, followed by Long Term Aging and Care. I didn't make it to the Hapo Center on time, but I did meet with HWL shortly after. Both of you had already left. And after talking with them, it sounds like we probably should look into the possibility of getting a project manager out there to try to speed up the processes that we're going through. They said it might be a little bit more of an additional cost, but the savings in time and effort would more than pay for it. Also got calls about Pasco's water treatment smell. It's, this has been going on for years. And it just doesn't seem like they've come up with a plan that actually works. I live about five miles from there and I can smell it from my house. Not as strong as what these people are enduring that live across the street from it. But it's time that we get some type of idea or plan to get rid of that smell. I sympathize with them. It's horrendous. So also attended the celebration of life for Doug Elliott, a well-respected member of our community who donated a tremendous amount of work and time to the Benton Franklin Fair and Rodeo and to our community. He will be greatly missed. So that ends my report.
Thank you. So on the public works, I think we can just go with a consensus here that if, because I know they had a I know they had a, somebody stepped out of a truck and rolled an ankle, I saw the incident report. They're out there chip sealing, they just did Langford, they did Eltopi West, they're down here working today on self-landing. So I think the Commissioners, we probably should just give the consensus that they keep the crew fully loaded with employees so that we can keep these projects moving forward, and just to keep a close, keep a close eye on the budget. So the Hapo Solar, I think I'm ready to make my decision on that right now with the new administration and the federal government. I don't think we should probably be looking into doing that, so that's my, and I know we're going to get a legal report next week, so. Yes, the Pasco Water Treatment Plant, I've been getting phone calls on this since I became a Commissioner, and it is horrible, because they called me and I went down there in the evening when, when it was still, and I think it's an injustice that we've got city council members blaming this on Lamb Weston. They said Lamb Weston was, now Lamb Weston does have a smell too when you drive out Glade Road, but it's nothing comparable to this. This is horrific, and we, they just expanded this. It's bigger. So I was told by a very prominent person that they're not treating their water right, they don't know what they're doing, so this is again, a government entity trying to do a private sector job, so it, it's, it's a tough thing to handle. Went for the Hapo McKinstry tour. Also want to address this, the emails we're getting right now from our resolution that we passed for the sanctuary status of our county, and I want to ask everybody to please redirect their emails from our administrator. He only follows the lead of what we, the Commissioners, want, so please do not send him threatening and derogatory emails. You send them, send them to the chairman, that's me. Don't send them to our administrator. We're the ones that told him what to write, we're the ones that need to take the heat. If you don't like it, run for office. These positions will be up again. Put your name in the hat and run for the position if you want to do the job. And I'm just saying, this country is a republic. We're governed by a rule of law. The laws are that we protect our borders, we keep a safe and secure country, so our citizens don't have to live in fear. If these people want to come and assimilate to be an American, we welcome you. You come, assimilate, and become an American. But if you want to come here illegally and reside here and think you can break our laws, we're going to deport you. We need people to work out on these farms. We want you to come and assimilate. We've got some great people out there. I've asked to be their, their witness, and I said, "I'll, I'll be there for you to become a citizen. I'll be the guy that stands beside you." We need you here in this country. We want people to come here and assimilate. But please don't direct any more emails to our administrator. You direct them to the Chair of the Board. I'll take the heat. Also had a citizen talking about the Ben Franklin Transit advertising. He's on his phone, he's getting all this advertisement, wondering how in the heck, why are we advertising so hard for something that's free for people to ride? We're spending money we don't need to be spending. I agree. Ben Franklin Transit has a larger budget than Franklin County does. Their six tenths of one percent equates to 60 million a year, plus they're getting state grants and federal money. And again, I'm not seeing an increase in people on buses in Pasco. As I drive around, there's one, two, maybe three people on these big diesel pushers. So this is a avenue that I think we really need to be conscientious of, because every time we put up another Ben Franklin Transit building, there's a responsibility for maintenance, for, for housing the people, putting the people in there that are working, those workers are going to have salaries, retirements, benefits. It just keeps boondogling to the point when they, when their funding is not there, it's going to be a day of reckoning for Ben Franklin Transit, and I think they need to really watch their movement now with this economy the way it is. They need to really be careful of expansion right now. And Doug Elliott. Yesterday we had his funeral at St. Paul the Apostle, and I've never seen that church that full of people before. Every chair in the church was taken up. There was probably 40, 50 people standing in the back, and then I heard that out at the fairgrounds, it was...
It was packed.
Yeah. This man gave of him, he was a servant of this community. He gave back to this community. He was an incredible man and raised an incredible family, and it's a tribute to him, especially Doug, but his, the Sullivan's, the Elliott's, these are mainstays in this county from the get-go. And I just want to say that it was a pleasure and an honor to know Doug and to be able to work with him, and to be honest with you, I had met with him numerous times, was trying to get him to run for this position as county commissioner, because he would have been a great county commissioner. We love you, Doug. All right, so we're down to public comment. Yes, please, Mr. Benson.
I would be remiss in my duties if I didn't mention an omission that I made, which is that we have with us now Genesis Herrera, who is our new office assistant, and so wanted to introduce her to you gentlemen, but also the county and the public at large. So Genesis, we're thrilled to have you onboard.
It's a pleasure being here, bright and sort of community.
Thank you. So with that, we'll move down to public comment. Anybody for public comment?
So with regard to the stink, did some research on that a long time ago, and dairy farms have started using worm farms to eat up the material, and it lowers the stink and produces another economic mechanism by which a farmer can make money. It sounds stupid, but I encourage you to look into it. I think it would settle a lot of things. With Habitat for Humanity, when I worked at Sterling College, we developed a Full Ride Scholarship, and they do have to do sweat equity, and what we developed was college students helping with those projects, who also we arranged for AmeriCorps grants, which paid health insurance and a minor stipend for their service to a rural area, so you might think about that with Kalodas and Basin, especially with the USDA coming in. I know that AmeriCorps is still an active program. I don't know if it's been taken over by strange forces we often run into. The sewer in Kalodas is one of the things that they did mention, so I want to affirm that. The guard shack, I am surprised that we don't have a very good working metal detector. In years past, years past, people walk through and beep, and it's because they worked in the building that they weren't stopped, and I'm concerned about that, not because I think anyone in this building would do something, but people have other things going on in their lives, and they can possibly do some things. So I encourage the staff out there to check, even if it's somebody that works here and beeps through every day, it's for our protection, it's for everyone's protection, and without judgment, but I, I, I am very concerned about that. I do want to make you aware of NoKings.org. They are the group that created the riot, had pallets of bricks down there in LA. They are coming to the Columbia Center Mall on June 14th, they're going to be in Union Gap, they're going to be all the way up to OMAC, folks. Do not go near the Columbia Center Mall on, on Saturday. I, I am deeply concerned, and today I'm not bringing the resolution to start a constitution, cautional compliance committee, but I'm very likely to bring a resolution next week, and that is bonding. I agree with the transit issues, and Doug Elliott worked with my husband for years. We visited with them often when we were at the fair, because the rodeo is one of our favorite things to go to. Did not find out that he passed until last night. He will be missed.
Anybody else for public comment? With that, we will move into an executive session, I believe we have one?
Yes, under 4230, 110, 1I, triple I litigation. We'll need approximately 15 minutes. Myself, the board, Mr. Danzel, Ms. Lloyd, well, the, I guess the clerks upstairs keeping time.
Okay. 15 minutes, and so at this time, we'll recess into executive session at 9:36. Gives us 30 seconds to get down there, or let's go 9:37. We'll go into executive session at 9:37, so it gives us a minute and a half to get down there.
On the cellphone? Yes, I did.
We are back to regular session from executive session with no decisions being made. Is there any other business for the good of the county?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So, got the opportunity to watch the swearing in with Chief Harmon. And so they got, they got this done, so that is the chief's badge and the patch that they have chosen that should be here soon. And so it was really special to be able to be there at the swearing in. And thank you to our clerk and Genesis for all their efforts. As the chief swore in, all of his officers. He, he had a certificate that they swore and signed to that they would protect and defend the Constitution. And it's pretty special. Love it if you gentlemen would see that. And so they did half of their deputies yesterday morning, and they'll do the other half tomorrow, the different squads. And it was pretty, pretty special. And then Senator Dozier, former Two-Term County And then Senator Dozier, former two-term county commissioner from Walla Walla County, came and swore in our chief. It was pretty special. They worked together in the past and so I'm pretty excited to, that, that they've gotten to this point. So congratulations to Franklin County Corrections and to Chief Harmon.
And I'd just like to say Chief Harmon is doing an incredible job already as he was doing previously. So we haven't missed a step here in Franklin County jails. One more thing I want to report on that I didn't in my report was resolution kills blue state EV rules mandates. And Congress has stopped the Environmental Protection Agency from allowing California, Washington and other states to ban gas, online and diesel powered cars, pickups and freight trucks. The Senate adopted resolution, May 22nd overturning a trio of Calif- California rules that require automakers to ramp up sales of hybrid zero emission vehicles. The House adopted the resolution April 30th, so it's went through both houses. Washington, Oregon and 15 other states adopt all of the same, all or some of California's vehicle emission rules. Washington in particular strictly adheres to rules set by California Air Resource Board. Today's decision by Congress is brazenly out of step with the law, science and public will. Washington Governor Bob Ferguson stated in his statement. I think he needs to go back to law school. But anyway, that's good news right there because of course within this farming community, we gotta be able to get our goods to market. Can't do it with electric trucks, that's for sure. So with that, is there any other business for the good of the county? With that, we will adjourn the meeting and move right into our workshop. Is there approval of the workshop agenda?
Mr. Chairman moved for approval of the workshop agenda with one item. Countywide policies for a comprehensive plan update process with Mr. McCart.
Second.
Been a motion of second for the adoption of the work, the workshop agenda. So with that, we'll move right into public comment. And of course it can only be addressed to the current countywide policies with the comprehensive update process. Is there anybody for public comment? We'll move right into the workshop then. Mr. McCart. Getting his computer set up right now.
I didn't get a chance to read it, but I was going to because I pulled it out of past newspapers. I'm like, I need to read that. So, thank you commissioners. Good morning. Just wanted an opportunity to share with you where we are in the update process and, and give you a little explanation. What are the countywide planning policies? What have we done so far? See if there's anything we missed before we bring it in front of you for a, a hearing. I, I believe all three of you were supplied with, with this document ahead of time. Basically, this is the document that describes how the counties will work together. The law requires us to be consistent across jurisdictions. That doesn't mean the same. It means consistency is not the same. But it does set up the, the basic parameters for which we'll move forward on. As you can see, right now, this is the final draft that we have. Want to make sure that there's something here that's not a major problem that you're going to have me go back with the cities and, and work on. Is there something I've missed? Is there something that, that we've done that, that you think we should change along the way? Little bit out of practice here with using a computer without a mouse. I'm mouse dependent. So in just going through these, you can, you can see, and that's not a very big picture. Maybe I can make it a little bit bigger here. I don't know. It's not letting me do that. There we go. Let's do that. That might help. There we go. Thank you. So in this, the, the main policies here, as you can see, we have all the different elements that are there. We've added some greenhouse gas emission to the transportation and vehicle miles traveled. That is a state law requirement. Commissioner, I see the smile. We all have our own opinion on this, but we're required to do it and we will do the best we can to accommodate that piece. The housing, that is another section of the law that has changed since the last update. We are required to provide for housing across all of the different income levels throughout the county. One of the items that we had to discuss, two of the main items we had to discuss between the county and the city is the population. I, I didn't bring all that information today, but I can assure you, if you, if you want to see it, I can, I can show you that the population threshold that we picked was moderate. The medium population growth. If, if you looked at the graphs, it almost identically matched up with where we've been, where we've been going. So we, we, we did that element. The other element we had to talk about was distribution of the housing across the different jurisdictions. Obviously, when you're talking about trying to get smaller homes, more affordable homes, accessory dwelling units for a large extent, trying to get those in an urban, urban growth area is where most of the time it would fit. So, you know, those are things that we had to allocate. We do have some allocation across. There was very little allocation to Misa and Kalotis because those communities are pretty much populations staying the same. When it comes to the Connell, there was a slight allocation towards them. Most of the allocation was in Pasco and the UGA surrounding the Pasco area. Most of those facilities, when you start talking about affordable housing, you're talking about townhomes, sixplexes, apartments, structures that require infrastructure that for the most part can't happen in an ag or a rural area. So the other piece that, you know, I heard from you gentlemen loud and clear and really wanted to put in there was to beef up our economics section. And, and you know, we've had some, I've had some pretty tough discussions. I know Pasco, the city representative from Pasco that's been working on this with us, he has resisted some of my comments and I had a really good conversation with him. You know, there's, seems to be some misinformation out there that the county somehow wants to take money away from Pasco so that we can do better. That is the wrong impression. That is not the intent. The intent here is that we are all in this boat together and we need to all move in a positive direction. We're not trying to steal anything from anybody else. We have to be able to figure out how we can provide for our industry, for job growth, for housing across the entire county and not get into the middle of a food fight amongst ourselves. We can fight to try and steal things from other counties in other areas to benefit our citizens here. Let's see here if I can get this to go again. So used, no changes to the property rights or natural resource industries other than we did add a couple of words in the natural resource section. Open space. Again, there's some, some changes in the law. We cleaned up some of the language in there to be more consistent with what the law requires. And then you'll see the elements that we have to add. Climate change and resiliency. One of the things I, I said in a webinar on the climate change and one of the things that they emphasized is to concentrate on what, what we need to do for resiliency, not what are the causes. So that makes me a little happier as we move forward planning is we're not trying to eliminate certain factions where what do we do to make ourselves resilient enough moving forward? So that, that's kind of the mindset that we're trying to set here. Shorelines of the state, that was a requirement when we, when you updated your shoreline master plan. That, that is now integrated into the comprehensive plan even though it's a separate element. Urban growth areas, a lot of discussion on the urban growth areas. One of the things that we have decided is that we don't believe we need more urban growth area. You expanded the Pasco urban growth area a few years ago. For residential purposes, we believe that urban growth area is pretty much where it needs to be. For a industry or a business, we would be looking forward as we, as we, as we do our comprehensive plan map, adding some more urban growth area. And it was in your comprehensive plan to move that direction anyway. So we'll probably add it some more urban growth area as it relates to industry. And that'll be mainly out towards, I'm going to say the Glade area. But if there are other areas that we need to concentrate, by all means, please let me know. Populations, I talked about that already. You can see we just generally cleaned up some of the language. Number 12 on this page, there was a law change to allow zero net swaps on urban growth areas. So if you had a large urban growth area, say around, and I'm just using this as an example. I'm not forecasting something. But if you had a lot, large urban growth area around Misa, but they weren't growing and you have a smaller one around Pasco and they are growing, you can do a swap of those urban growth areas as long as you don't increase the total amount of land. And it's a whole lot easier to do than expanding the urban growth area in the middle of a cycle. So that's kind of a innovative technique that's nice to include. We kind of took and broke up and got rid of some of the language in there about ag lands of long-term commercial significance as it relates to expansion of, of commercial agriculture, water rights. They didn't really belong in this section. We kind of just moved it around to be more appropriate. We did add, based on court precedent, we did add legal and physical availability of water as a requirement. That is a requirement that the Supreme Court did tell us we needed. For some reason, that case, I worked on that case for years, but for some reason it eludes me right now what the name of it was. But we used to just have to have physical availability of water. Now we have to also determine that it's legally available. That is a requirement for counties. We did kind of clean up the language as it relates to the urban growth areas, being consistent with what we need to look at. I know this is a really, really long list of items to consider. You'll notice sidewalks is in there. We, we, we left it more general. The idea of these countywide planning policies, one is to give us all the directions so that we're all going the same way. The, the other idea with these countywide planning policies is a lot of times counties will, and cities will adopt these and then they're never followed. Everybody just kind of puts it to the back of the envelope and never worries about it. My, my intent is that when we get to a point where we can start implementing these things, that we work with the cities, with the different cities individually to come up with inner local agreements that we can follow moving forward that both you gentlemen, you know, future boards and councils can agree on regulations that fit those areas much better. Items that we can work on together so that we're not each trying to do each other's guesswork on how to implement these. Uh, one, one of the items that seems to have a lot of consternation, and I've talked to our assessor. I, I've heard a lot of, of angst in this in my short time here in Franklin County was annexations and how they're handled. Again, these policies are meant to be, how do we work together, not meant to stop annexations. It's meant to look at it appropriately. You know, our public works department did a good job during this exercise. And one of the proposed annexations of pointing on existing law, annexations have happened where they would take it to the middle of the road. They're supposed to take it to the side of the easement of the road. They could either take the whole road or they can take none of the road. But the idea is also that we eliminate, idea of these policies and adding these is that we eliminate these cut up road sections we might have. City annex is in a little area over here and it's the beginning of a cul-de-sac. So we have to go through city jurisdiction to take care of that little end of the cul-de-sac because they left us that road. And kind of the idea of these policies is to wreck us in a way that it's like, if you're going to take part of it, at least take the whole road. You guys can take care of the road until some future times when that may, may be annexed in. We're not dividing up pieces of road. Also, this was a lot of input from the assessor in here. You know, when they do annexations, making sure we're annexing it appropriately makes the ability to, to do our maps, implement the assessments more appropriately. We put a lot of extra policies in here related to essential public facilities. I can tell you, coming from Stevens County, we had a very, very high level essential public facility being proposed to be cited in the city of Chewila. There was not enough law enforcement in the county or the city to take care of that. It should have never been a cited there. It was an intense behavioral health facility. That facility should have gone someplace where there are better services. So trying to beef this up so that we can figure out ahead of time if these facilities are going to be proposed, where they would go appropriately to have the right kind of services, the right kind of lining. You know, you'd hate to put a facility out there in the middle of nowhere and not have fire response to it or police response to it. So these are some of the things that we can set in policy to cite these facilities appropriately. Some, some are not a huge issue. You know, group homes tend not to be very controversial. Whereas you get into these intensive behavioral health facilities where you, you're taking patients out of Eastern that have been deemed competent and stick them in the middle of a, of a, a neighborhood. And all of a sudden, you gentlemen are going to find your life is very difficult and we are trying to not make that happen. We did a little bit of making sure that we have appropriate transportation in here for levels of service. Affordable housing, we, it's, it's named affordable housing, but essentially we, we have added this section, policies in this section to make sure that we're getting, we're being fair and equitable with our homes and we're making sure that we're taking care of all different income levels. If there's anything else here I want to highlight. We took out any specifics to a particular entity in here. This is meant to be a very, very high level document. It's not meant to get down in the weeds. Number 47 there, you'll notice that we, we have, this is where we've added pieces in here that will support our expanding economic development by adding either in the urban growth. that will support our expanding economic development by adding either in the urban growth area or adjacent to the urban growth area so that we're, we're having industries. And, you know, I've heard from the Port District, they're looking for diversification in some of the industries that have been brought in. That can be a really good thing, you know, with not knowing where the federal government's going to go in the future with Hanford. Making sure that we have economic opportunities for those folks that might be displaced if something were to, were to get done or they were going to get done with that project out there sometime in our lifetime, right?
I heard they got the connection to the vit plant yesterday done.
Oh, okay. Progress.
I also heard that their budget got cut some too.
Yeah, I, I've, I've heard that. That's why I mentioned that, you know, we, we need to have a resilient economy. That's the intention here. And to the extent that we're not a roadblock in our land use policies, that's, that's the intent of this. It's to provide the opportunities, not actually provide for the development itself. That's up to the private industry to do. Policies for participation. Federally recognized tribes may voluntarily participate in the county regional planning process. This is required by law. So, we added some participation in there to allow for the tribal and you gentlemen signed letters inviting them to this process. I have had no response to this point. So, we don't have any specific policies that were added to the countywide planning policies as relates to working relationships with the tribes. Happy to entertain those if they want to come to the table. We've, we've offered that. You gentlemen have signed the letter to offer that and that still remains open at any time during the policies. And that pretty much sums up what we have. I just wanted to show, I did get this email here. Did want to share that with you also, that RCW requires us to participate, offer that participation with the tribes as a policy. It doesn't require us to add and go any further than that. So, it seemed a little bit out of sync for us as county and city to offer policies related to tribes with the tribes not at the table. So, we chose to stop right there. So, with that, I'll entertain if you have any questions or if there's something that, you know, I may have missed or you want clarification on. I think this is a good time. The cities are doing the same type of thing. They're putting in front of the council. It is only you gentlemen that sign off on this. The cities have no formal adoption process. But we would like to have, you know, we obviously want their buy-in. So, we've asked their mayors and their staff. Oh, one more thing before I open up for questions. I had the opportunity to talk with the mayor of Kalotas. Finally caught up with him. We've got him rolled into this process. He was at our last meeting. He attended. And Commerce actually asked me to reach out to Kalotas and see because they have not engaged. I did get them hooked up with their funding. Their comprehensive plan is way behind and their development regulations are even further behind. So, nice to see that we got all of the entities at the table and got them up to speed, so.
Questions, commissioners?
Thank you, Mr. McCart, for your diligence on this. It's been a long time in coming and I certainly do appreciate it. Some of the areas, you're already addressing them, but some of the areas that are of particular interest to me is, and I don't know exactly how this works. You and I have visited about it in brief. But the city, when they annex, they annex donut holes or they don't annex the, the donut hole. And I think that that's improper. It causes headaches for us. It causes headaches for them. And would like to see if there's a way to, to do that so that, that, that we don't create additional headaches for our public works department and so forth down the road. Appreciate the, the thought that we can adjust the boundary as long as we're not increasing our acreage. I think that's a, there's a couple of areas we need to consider that part. And appreciate your reaching out to our other jurisdictions, Connel, Misa, Kalotas, et cetera. That, that's helpful. You were a part of the meeting where that, that we sat down and, and talked with Misa and think that we should get in the habit of maybe doing that on a quarterly basis where that we sat down and I know that you're working on that and.
So, I, I have been in constant communication with Misa several times. I did make it to one of their actual city council meetings. Happy to, told them I was happy to attend future ones. Kalotas, I intend to do the same thing and at some point, I'll, I'll, I'll make it to, to Pasco. Trying to get my cop back up from not having a director here for a few months. I, I keep running into little roadblocks that kind of put me in a different direction, but, but we're, we're making headway.
Good. I appreciate that. I, I wrote several notes here and, and as you were talking, you answered, you answered most of them. So, I just appreciate that. I'll come see you and, and share some, some ideas and thoughts.
Sure, sure.
Well, thank you for your time and effort in getting this cleaned up. It's been a long overdue.
Wes, just want to thank you again for coming down. I had a gentleman yesterday approach me and said, hey, we were annexed into the city and I want to be, I want to be back in the county. So, I mean, there's people and I know the donut holes. There's people with mixed emotions down there, whether they want to be part of the county or the city. It makes sense that they would be part of the city and then they can quit demanding that they pay for the sidewalks and they pay for the sewer to be put in and everything else that they're demanding these people that are living in these donut holes. I think this is something that we really need to focus our efforts on and making sure that we make this thing complete. And right now, it looks like a jigsaw puzzle with pieces missing. So, we need to, we need to finish this thing or fix it because it is a mess.
So, once we get this done, that, I, I, you know, again, talking with the assessor because all these annexations go through the assessor's office. I've had, you know, brief conversation with legal on, on some of this stuff. I, I really think it behooves us on annexation issue to take these policies as the framework once they're adopted and start carving out an ILA, especially with the city of Pasco. Again, not too big of a deal in the other parts of the county, just because those entities don't seem to be growing very fast. But with Pasco increasing in size and, you know, annexations taking place, getting something that's a little bit more official and hardcore, basically a contract between us on how we're communicating and making sure that communication takes place early and often so that we can avoid these unforeseen circumstances would be hugely beneficial.
Also, I'd just like to say that, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. I had something to add on this. So, if, if I may, Chair.
Yes, please.
So, the city does hold a lot of the cards, particularly Pasco, is they can extend urban services, particularly sewer and water into their urban growth boundary. So, if we did a ILA, an interlocal agreement with the city, that would enable us with our zoning authority, which we still have because it's technically still the county in the unincorporated urban growth area. What the city wants is they want development to city standards within this, this area. So, if we agree to allow, and of course, I can't speak for the city. They can, they can do that for themselves just fine. But I think this is what they want. They want development to city standards so that when they do annex, it looks like the rest of the city. And so, and then in exchange for that, they would extend their water and sewer. And so, then they do that and then they get, they get their sidewalks and sewer and everything sort of develops orderly and you get that, that, that concurrency of services. You get the, the, the roads that are built to city standards. You get the, you get the sidewalks. And you get things built sort of right the first time, the, you know, the things done, done correctly the first way so that you don't have this piecemeal development and you don't have folks that are sort of left holding the bag. You don't want, you know, individual landowners, you know, that are ill-equipped to, you know, pay for sidewalks and roads on their own, having to do that. It makes a lot more sense for the developers that are doing larger plats to, to, to pay for those, to that, to pay for that infrastructure because quite frankly, they can, they can pass that off to the home purchasers anyway. So, that's, I think that's, that's sort of the way that I think the city would want us to structure an, an interlocal agreement.
Thank you. That's a good job, Jeff. So, also, the other thing is, we've mentioned several times here, Misa, Kalotas, Connel, Basin City, there are a couple other little communities that I think we need to be aware of. And that is Windust and Eltopia. Eltopia is a, honestly, it's a, it's got a lot of history. There's old buildings down there. This could be an incredible stop by the highway. Everybody traveling on 395. Go ahead.
So, those are, those are county jurisdictions. Basin City is not really a city. It's, it's county. Eltopia, all the ones you've mentioned, those are under a complete county jurisdiction.
Right.
So, not really part of this and they, they, I will assure you, Commissioner, I have no intention of forgetting them at all.
Thank you. Because Eltopia was once called Hell to Pay, you know? It was. They abbreviated, Hell to Pay. They abbreviated it down. The story is that when they were putting down the railroad ties and the irons and those guys were swinging the hammers, it was 117 degrees and they said they had to go through hell to get, get their paycheck. I kid you not. And they abbreviated it down, E L T O, and they dropped the Y and P I A, Eltopia. So, that's the story that I heard. So, anyway, just don't, and it's right on 395. It could be a, a great little place to create a stop there for people traveling, just like out there in, what's the name of that market out there?
Country Mercantile.
Country Mercantile. But anyway, just an idea. Thank you, Wes.
So, just one more comment, if I may. I did remind the city jurisdictions that when they are annexing in property, if there are exempt wells or water rights associated with that property, they should be, you know, especially exempt wells. There's a provision in the law that allows them to add that to their system. What you find is a lot of cities will grow, grow, grow and they don't bother to deal with the water rights and then they run out of water and, and they have an issue. So, in particular, I know Pasco has suffered with water issues over the years. I've been in some of those statewide conversations over that issue. So, you know, especially Pasco, you know, if you're annexing in spots that have those exempt wells, it doesn't seem like a lot of water at the time, but it's a pretty easy process to add into your system. And it's, it's just a small amount of paperwork to automatically get it in and, and have it added. So, you don't, we're not hurting for water down the line when we're really not hurting for water.
Yeah. And, and when you, when you take a single-family residence with an exempt well that is eligible for 5,000 gallons a day and that is not using 5,000, one residence doesn't use 5,000 gallons a day, it can, it can potentially be significantly helpful to the city if they go deliberately about it. So, yeah, I appreciate you pointing that out to them.
Thank you, Wes.
Okay.
Mr. Denzel.
Yeah, I would be remiss if I didn't point out that Wes, Mr. McCart has provided this and made this presentation on top of about 50 other things that we're asking him to do. So, I appreciate your hard work. I appreciate your accuracy and I appreciate your understanding of what the board's position is. Thank you, Wes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we'll move down to public comment. Anybody for public comment? Saying none, I will adjourn the workshop.